Hola Roberto.
Buenas tardes, buenas tardes, ¿cómo están todos?
Bien gracias.
Bien.
Hola Maho.
Hola.
Good evening everyone, welcome to our monthly Board of Trustees meeting at LEAP Dual Language Academy. We are gonna spend just a couple of minutes waiting for everyone to join us, but I appreciate your being here. I see a couple of our LEAP Academy parents are in attendance. Daisy Rosado, Lauren Farber Wine Trabbs, so welcome to both of you and try to monitor and make sure we notice if anyone else is able to join from the public. Public being a relative term, of course, you're part of the familia, but I'm glad that you're here either way.
I'll send Magdalena and Emily a text while we wait. Just a couple more minutes, I think. If we don't hear back, I believe we've got a quorum at this point, so. Thanks for your patience, everyone.
We'll say it's a beautiful day here at the school. Looking forward to having our outdoor recess back for days like this. In particular.
Sure. Kids are probably chomping at the bit. Okay, I think we can go ahead and get started. I'm Magdalena, will be able to join us in a little bit, and I haven't heard back from Emily yet, but we do have a quorum. It's 6:08, so we can go ahead and get started. Thank you, board members and members of public and members of the school staff for being with us tonight, and we will go ahead and get started with the April meeting. Great, all right, we'll start with routine business, which is the approval of the agenda. I wanted to make one edit to the agenda as written, and that would be to add, hang on one second, apologies. Okay, Emily will not be able to make it, that's fine. Okay, so the agenda, we want to add one item to under new business, which would be a vote on appointing Charles to the finance committee, but I unless anybody has any other edits to the agenda, are we, can I make a motion to approve it? With that one amendment?
One second.
Great, right, so let me just re, let me rephrase it, just to make sure. I'm sure all my Ts and dotting all my Is, so motion to approve the agenda for tonight with one amendment, which is an additional new business item, voting on Board Member Charles Sam's appointment to the finance committee. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. Approval of minutes, there are two minutes approvals. For us, there is the March, regular March minutes and the special meeting minutes from April 5th. Does anybody have any edits to either of those minutes documents? Good, okay. All right then, I will make a motion first to approve the board minutes from March, may I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, thank you.
Not present and abstained.
Okay. And then the April 5th meeting minutes, any no edits to those, all right, then I would make a motion to approve the four minutes from the April 5th meeting, may I have a second? Second from David, okay, thank you, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful, thank you. All right, I will leave it to Michael to take us into new business.
Thank you Gabrielle. First bit of new business is, is the updates that we'd like to share, and the first update is that we had our annual lottery event last week, and have been pleased with the interest in our school this year. You can see some of the current numbers on screen right now, our waiting list currently stands at 73 families. So it's a little bittersweet to have depend for the school, because you hear those phone calls from families who wish that they were closer to getting an offer of a seat. But we continue to refer to the waitlist as a likely list, we know that you're still likely to eventually get an offer if you're on that list. As you can see here, we received 168 applications for 107 open seats before the deadline, and they've continued to come in, another 32 since then. And the way it works is that when you get an offer of a seat at LEAP Academy, you have two weeks to respond. So a little past half of that, since the lottery, we've had 50% acceptance, 5% decline, the others still waiting for the official decision. The, the only other point that I really want to stress is that we're continuing to do our marketing and outreach. Our spending is not quite as intensive at this point as we're adding to the waiting list, but we're going to be in the upcoming bilingual edition of Brooklyn Community Newspaper. We're continuing our digital outreach, and, and we've also just continued to work and listen to families and understand where they heard about us. I think the trend this year is just a more direct connection to the school among our applicants, there's a lot more cousins and, you know, people who know someone who already goes to LEAP Academy, whereas the first couple of years a little bit more speculative of a choice, for those of you who are among our founding families on the call, man, we appreciate the faith you put in us. But we're starting to get a little bit more of a, of a reputation, and that's helpful when it comes to recruiting, so. I do want to shout out, our ops team has been working really hard. And after the lottery, you take people through the registration process, but this is the latest information about that. As I go through, please feel free to, to jump in with any questions. A few other highlights, and I will not try to make it a practice of rereading everything that was in the pre-read, but you can always feel free to ask about something that, that you saw there. But I do want to talk about a few items, first of all, as of our special meeting, we've obviously made that transition in our leadership structure, and with that has, and just with the time of year, has, you know, come a lot of conversations as we plan for the upcoming year. Coincidentally, we had a chance to gather as almost a whole staff last week, offsite for a few hours to relax and get some fresh air, and also, you know, talk a little bit about where we're heading as a school. And since then, I've been arranging with, with Delliness and our team to make sure that I or we are sitting down with everyone who works at LEAP Academy to sort of take their polls, get their feedback. Similarly, we've been surveying our team about their ideas, their plans for the future, if they intend to come back with us next year, their interest in teaching over the summer, and, you know, and their feedback, so we've been very much in listening and planning mode. And I just think that it's, it's a good practice now and again, and especially, you know, when there's a, when there's a transition in the way that the organization is led. So along the same lines, we are putting all the resources we can into staff recruitment, bringing candidates through interview cycles, demonstration lessons, both for teacher and associate teacher and leadership level roles, and, you know, planning for our, our annual budget, which we'll talk about a little bit later and really take up in earnest next month, so. All these pieces have to sort of fit together as we think about school year 21, 22. COVID and safety has been obviously a key concern, as I believe everyone knows, we had to go remote as a whole school shortly before spring break. And we, coming out of the break, you know, have been as always, you know, revisiting what's going on, thinking about how we can take the highest leverage actions to, to keep us safe and keep us open, as our slogan goes. I, I want to make sure that everyone knows that a key practice is getting shots in arms, getting the vaccine, both to our staff members and especially to members of our students' families and their households. And so we've, we've taken a number of proactive steps on that front. This past Saturday, we held nicely attended family workshop online, in which we talked about all the benefits of vaccine, some of the myths about that, and some of the other steps that we can all take to try to, you know, prevent COVID from reaching our building. We've also been reaching out to our families with an invitation to call us, email us, grab us at dismissal, because we're ready to help make appointments, and I really appreciate our front desk staff, I don't have the latest count, I think it's around 20 families, but we continue to try to get those numbers up, people who are reaching out to us so that we can guide them through the process of going online, making appointments, and, and really reassuring everybody that it's easy, it's free, it has nothing whatsoever to do with immigration status, you don't have to show your green card, for example. It's, it's just one of the best things that we can do, so we're going to continue to communicate that message in other ways. And we also had a nice and very hopeful meeting with one of our neighbors in the neighborhood, which is NYU Langone. And it seems that there is a very strong possibility, which Ms. Chang is actively working on, that LEAP Academy can serve as an actual vaccination center, that we could have an event on a weekend, that our staff can be a part of it, and we can invite our families to come in and actually get a vaccine here on site, so. We jumped at that opportunity, I appreciate Margarita's help setting that up, and we're, we're hopeful that we can just keep on pushing. And so along those lines, you know, we, we've had conversations with different families that reached out with, with different ideas. If you're on the call and you want to do more than make a quick public comment tonight, you know, you can always reach out to us as well with, with different ideas. The, the other kind of safety considerations, I want to mention a couple, one is that we continue to monitor the guidance from the state department of health. And that in turn continues to reflect the guidance that is coming out of the CDC. And so the latest regulations were pretty interesting to see in a nutshell, and it's, it's a pretty dense document, which I'm happy to share with anyone who wants to read it, but in a nutshell, the, the CDC and the state folks are, are saying that it's okay for elementary schools like ours to focus on a three-foot standard of social distancing, and that they're no longer really encouraging everyone to, to use the kinds of plastic shields that we've been using at LEAP. The caveat that I would add to that is that the state health authorities and our charter authorizer also continue to emphasize that we have the ability to make local decisions and to have local discretion in exactly what we do. So I would welcome input in the chat box in the meeting and/or offline as we think about this. I, I will tell you in all transparency, I, I'm not inclined to go get rid of all the shields in our building, in, in the classrooms where we, we have individual desks and plenty of spacing, where a teacher feels that they have been, you know, challenging for some of our academic activities, that's when I'm more inclined to say, you know what, yeah, let's, let's try it out and take advantage of, of this new regulation. But I know for our, our youngest kids, where they share tables, where they're less reliable about, you know, being careful while they're eating and the mask is allowed to be off, I'm inclined to be more conservative there, and so that's our current thinking, but as we, as we think this through, again, welcoming input from, from anybody in our school community. Just one more piece about COVID, I, I do think that it makes sense for our school to plan on opening next year with in-person classes only. We have made plans for Chromebooks, we, we know the drill at this point, and we know we have to be ready for every student to go remote if necessary. But considering the logistical and academic complexity of essentially running two schools, and with the trends going the way that they are, you know, my, my very strong recommendation would be that we plan on being in our building next year, and, and, and really be clear about that with, with families. Anecdotally, I know some of our families who are most risk averse have even said to me, and I don't speak for all of them, but one in particular I spoke to the other day said, you know, I understand, I'm so concerned about this, and at the same time, like, we know we have to be back in the fall, so I think psychologically that's significant for a number of our families, but it's an important decision for us to make now so that we can be planning. I just said a whole lot, so let me pause and ask if there's any, any questions or any discussion. You see the question in the chat there, Michael? Oh yeah, related question to the, the schedule, actually, if you don't mind, I think I'll come back to that question when we talk about the calendar, if somebody can remind me. But thank you for the question. Okay, I'll, I'll keep going, if you want to talk to me over, let me know. A couple of, you know, springtime and a little more clarity about our budget situation has allowed us to try to, you know, put our dollars to work a little bit more aggressively around the building in different ways. Couple of those are systems that we've invested in. I'll just mention too, our team has worked really hard to get ready to launch online registration for next year, so that you can enter your information directly, including if you're tech savvy enough, but not required, uploading your, your documents as part of the registration process. What that does is, is save us time and money and, and increase accuracy, and also just make it easier for, for parents to, to enter their information when they're enrolling in the school for the first time. So we're pleased about that, of course, we're still around to help when people don't feel comfortable with the computerized process. We've also been working and are still working on all of our follow-up protocols and tools for when a family has attendance issues. So at this point, you know, we, we have a data board where the daily attendance gets uploaded, and our team is tagging each other and following up on that, it's important that we get, you know, continue to, to focus on attendance for the rest of this year, it's, it's really just so important for our community. Next year, we plan to have a dean of students who can have that as a, as an important focus of his or her work. But of course, we're not waiting for that, so those are some examples of the types of things we've also been sort of tinkering with that might not be too obvious.
Thanks, Michael, and I, I want to just circle back on the safety points, I think this is also something we can probably talk about in more depth during the next education accountability meeting, it'd be interesting to hear Emily's perspective on, you know, what her network's doing and how they're approaching you as well.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I'd like to ask Roberto to, to share a few updates as well.
Thank you, Michael. I think this was reported before, Michael and I, when we opened the school year, we made a friend with Pastor Christopher Ortiz of Grace Baptist Church. Grace Baptist Church is a block up on 53rd Street and 6th Avenue. The church happens to have a parking lot. And the parking lot itself has a well, it has a need for a lot of work. And it requires probably resurfacing, probably requires some additional drainage work, but all in all, we looked at it as a potential temporary use of a playground. And we spoke to the pastor. You know, he liked the idea. He has since spoken to his board, the elders of the church, and they like the idea. We reached out to our friend Aaron Valley to send us a proposal, which I have in my hand. Aaron can serve as our primary project manager, landscape architect, et cetera, manager for the project. And so his next job is to come up with a phase one study that will then be given to a general contractor for a bid. And we'll stop at that point, because we want to take that bid to the elders of the church and say, you know, this is our plan. This is what it'll cost. We've already checked it out with our attorneys, and Cliff has advised us that, you know, it's a simple lease between the school and the church. The pastor is amenable to a long-term lease and a very, very advantageous offer to us, obviously, if we're doing the renovation, I mean, we're making a, an investment in getting the parking lot up and ready. So there is a great desire to, it's a win-win situation for both. He would like to have a parking lot that is in good shape and also see children playing there, and that'll help his church as well. It's a good neighbor project, and it's something that we're very excited about. So currently working on that as a potential. And again, it's, it's, it's a stopgap measure for us to have a playground where, that is secure, that is close by, and that gives us the opportunity to plan for our own facility down the road on the main campus. So this could buy us anywhere from three to five years worth of having a playground facility. I say this with all kinds of caution, that at the end of the day, it may work, it may not work, we're still subject to the board of the church, so. But we have some hopeful news on that, I'll stop for questions on the playground.
I'm a little confused, you mentioned playground and you mentioned parking. Is there going to be playground equipment or just flat surface so that open play can be can be had?
Sorry for the confusion, it is a parking lot, and it, the church uses it for its parking on Sunday. And so one of the, one of the requirements for the church is that we maintain it as a, as a functional parking lot, however, the pastor has said that he always wanted to have some green space towards the rear of the parking lot, in addition, he's also said that within that green space or adjoining it, we would have some kind of playground equipment. And the architect has said, well, you know, we could even have equipment that can be rolled on and rolled off, and it's he's seen these work before, so it would be a combination, Maho, so that we could still have a parking lot for the church and an open space for us, plus minimal playground equipment, does that make better sense?
It does, thank you.
Sure. All right. Great, so the coming school year options being explored with DBI, DBI is our project management partner. James New and his team, I think the board, correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, we have a contract that's being approved by the board for DBI, and, and David has looked over the contract, as has Michael, it is a contract for the purpose of management of a initial study on our current physical plant, that is, the second, third, and fourth floor, with a potential of adding on additional space, how much space would we need, how much space is possible within the existing plant? How much space would we need to acquire, and would that include the Chase Bank space? What could be done with the existing parking lot in the back? All of the options that the school needs to be studying in advance of a decision on whether to continue to invest on this plant, or look at other options that would provide additional space, however, would be at a different location. So DBI is doing the study that will allow us to understand all of our options that, that are financially driven, of course, but they're also, and more importantly, needs driven. We obviously need space for grades four and five. So where's the best place for us to put that? Michael, do you want to talk further on that?
No, I would just point out that at the same time, we're looking at some, some other opportunities, whether they're short or long-term, we know that in a couple of years, we'll have fourth graders. And so, you know, that's the due diligence work going on now, is to look at different scenarios of how we can make sure that, that we have the appropriate facility for everybody, you know, here in Sunset Park, if not right here at at our current site.
Any questions on, on the DBI project? Okay. Development, and I, I, I start by saying that so many of us have been involved in fundraising, and we all know that fundraising is about developing relationships. Our chairperson and Maho, Michael, all of us, Charles, we now have a focused approach, I had a meeting with David yesterday, and with Gabrielle as well. I'm, I'm regularly meeting with Michael, and very soon, as, as soon as Thursday, we will be meeting to discuss a long-term needs approach for the school, that needs approach will then drive a development strategy for the short and long term. And there's going to be lots of nice to haves, there's going to be a lot of long-term capital needs, there's going to be even longer-term growth needs in the event of replication at future, a future school down the road at some time. Still, development is ongoing, it doesn't, you know, it's, it's a kind of work that, that is based on organizations' vision for its growth, and certainly the board's vision for its growth. And, and, you know, we're starting that work already, it's not something foreign to us, we've been doing development since I started in 2015. A lot of the major charter school players in this country know us, so on that end, we, we have good friends. But on the more practical side, including this playground, I would go back to the board and say, if you have any contacts that people that might want to give or donate to a playground and put their name on it, there's all, all those kinds of possibilities, and, and I'd be happy to take those, those contacts and work with them. But it is a strategy that is based on the school's needs and the board's vision for growth. But it is a strategy that is based on the school's needs and the board's vision for growth. Any questions on development? Okay. And lastly, this is a longer term bullet I asked Michael to insert in the in the bullets because he and I from the very beginning knew and and as the board knows, from the very beginning, we have an eye and a focus on our first school, our flagship school, our euphemistically calling it our laboratory school. It is the school that we have to prove everything that we set out to do. And so we're focused on our first school and want to ensure that our parents and our families and our communities know that before we even consider any future replication of new schools, we have to ensure that our first school is performing not just at standard but beyond standard. So we still put in replication as part of our work because as as we've discussed within this new leadership transition, replication will come in the future. And the process of starting another school is a long term one. One cannot decide today to start a school and then have a school up and running next year. It's a two to three year endeavor. And and that's why we put that in there. We're looking at opportunities both here in New York. We'd love to stay in New York. The cap prevents us from opening up new schools in the city. But there could be needs very close to us on Long Island, as close as White Plains and other communities that may want and desire a model such as LEAP. I think that's all I can say about that, Michael.
Thank you so much. I'd like to share a few staffing updates. Last time we let you know that we have a new instructional coach hired. Tiara Watson has since begun work and we're glad to have her on board. Today was the first day for Diana, who you see here, who is our director of summer and after school programs. So we have asked Diana to help us create program offerings for this summer, which she is busy doing. We will be sharing updates by the end of this week with our families as to what those opportunities are going to be, how they're going to work, dates, prices, times, all that sort of work. So that is something that Diana was able to start some preliminary work even before she officially started. And and so we're glad to have her here. The other piece of her work, of course, will be helping us evaluate how we continue our model and our educational impact and our education of the whole child beyond the school hours in 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 the form of our after school offerings. So I don't want to be premature in talking about exactly how that may look, but Diana is somebody who's got nine years of leadership in the summer and after school space. She recently earned her MBA. She's been at at local New York City nonprofits running, frankly, much larger programs than we will be able to have yet because we're still pretty small, but she's a native of Ecuador and loved the dual language approach that we have here. So I think we're lucky to have her join our leadership team. We also have some midyear needs that we're working to address. We have a kindergarten classroom where we have a full time teacher and also as of this week, a full time coverage in the form of an aide who knows the kids very well. But we still want to have that associate teacher who who belongs in that class. And so without going into too much detail, those that search is very much in progress. It's a hard time of year to be to be hiring teachers, but we know that we need to do that. We also have a need in a second grade classroom where we have a teacher ready to become a dean. But first, we need to have her replacement in place. So I want you all to be aware of those needs. They they're nagging at us, but we're working to to fill those spots this year. The next item on the agenda would be some some academic updates. I've asked Deli Ness to focus on some formative assessment results that we've gotten back. So Deli Ness, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, so we have received our second round of data for our English step. And just to recap, that is the literacy assessment, the reading assessment that we give our students. Earlier, we reviewed at a prior meeting our our Spanish step data. And now we have our step English data that's in and that I want to update everyone on how we did in our second round of assessments. So as you can see here, forty six percent of our students moved up two or more levels. Eighteen percent moved up one level. And then we have thirty six percent of students who did not move up a full level. Teachers and interventionists are working with these students. I think it's important to note that within this thirty six percent number, we have some of our remote students that are in there. And we also want to note that although students did not move an entire level, we did see growth within that level. The expectation is that students move at least one step level for each round. So that's where we are right now with the English data. When we put that all together, sixty two percent, about sixty two percent of our students moved. And so we still have work to do. However, I do want to shout out the team. To see forty six percent of students moving two or plus levels is really amazing work. And it's a result of the hard work and dedication of our teachers who have been working tirelessly in the sake of providing our kids an amazing education. They've been really passionate, working hard to make sure that they implement all of the feedback that we've been giving them as an instructional leadership team. We've been working as a team, really focused professional development around literacy instruction and what strong, small literacy instruction looks like. And I think that the results that we have seen here is a result of the hard work and the focus that we've had this particular year around literacy. I think that being said, of course, there's still work to be done. We want one hundred percent of our students moving up the step levels and meeting our targets. And so as Michael referenced before, just about after school and summer school, part of that summer school planning is how can we keep in our building our kids who are not showing as much growth as we would like so that the learning doesn't stop during those summer months? We really want to be able to use the summertime to continue to give remediation to our students who need that the most. And so while we're also planning for an enrichment program, we we are thinking about who are the students most in need academically and creating an academic program for them as well so that there isn't additional learning loss during that summertime. So breaking this down just into concrete numbers when we look at this. So eighty five students. That's that percentage of students who did not move a level. We have forty two students who moved one step level, fifty seven students who moved two step levels, and fifty students who moved three or plus more levels, which is more than a year's worth of growth within a two to three month timeframe. Again, really exciting results, but we need to continue to still push that because the goal is for our kids to catch up and to be on grade level. And so while we've seen those really big jumps, those two plus step levels that kids have grown, we still have to see more growth and push for most more growth to make sure that they're on par with other students and making sure that they are on grade level. At the last education and accountability meeting, we talked a little bit about benchmarks and what appropriate benchmarks for our dual language program looks like. And that is something that we are also engaging with with our step consultants who also agree that some of these benchmarks may need to be more properly looked at and analyzed in the dual language setting around how much growth is expected. Because our kids are making multiple growths, not just in one language, but in two languages, which is really exciting. And so we're doing a little bit more research on on what is appropriate amount of growth and yet still keeping the rigor and the high expectations and making sure that they are ready for that state assessment, meeting and exceeding our academic standards such as our mission statement states.
Thank you, Deli Ness.
May I just ask a couple of questions about that?
Thanks, Deli Ness. I I really just, first, I wanted to understand a little bit about what this positive increase means in terms of bringing the kids up to speed in terms of grade level compared to some of the other testing we've seen as a board prior to this. And and while I agree, the step is dramatic and one and and great, I'm just curious where that context lies for some of us who have only seen the other testing that that the board has been presented in the past.
So when we've talked about other data that we've looked at, so far, we've looked at our Spanish assessments and in step. And now we're looking at the English. So we've been really focused on the step data. What we're seeing now is sort of the parallel of what we saw before for the Spanish round. So we were looking at how we did in Spanish the last time that we talked about our data and now
I mean, compared to the English, I mean, compared to the English results that we've seen.
Well, Spanish compared to to English is what you're asking.
No, I I mean, from other methodologies of testing where we had students who were behind grade level in English. And now we've moved to step and we're showing a good development. I'm just curious how that development relates to the prior testing we saw. And so really, maybe what I'm saying is good, everyone's improving. But are they now reading English or performing English at a grade level?
Yeah.
And and and, you know, I have another question, but I would like to hear that.
So we're still catching students up on grade level. So for example, in kindergarten, we have about fifty percent of our students who have met the benchmark for where they're supposed to be right now. And so still working on the other fifty percent to reach that target where we want them to be. In first grade and second grade, that number is lower. And so we're still working for the majority of our second grade students, they're still not reading at where they need to be according to step for the grade that they're in. And so although they've made dramatic jumps, they're still not at grade level. And so that's why we're, when I mentioned good growth, but still a lot to go further in, we're still working towards getting our students to grade level because the majority of them are still not at that grade level expectancy for the grade level that there are in English.
It it may be helpful to
No, I appreciate the comment also because the second graders are making the biggest strides.
That's right.
You know, you're you're focusing attention where it needs to be focused. I think that's something we we should pay attention to a little bit here. But I also know that we all have a goal of getting everyone to to that level. So I just, I'm not on the academic committee and I don't get some of that color. I think that's helpful for everyone. Mike, I'm sorry to to cut you off, Michael, just to to spit out the other thing I wanted to say quickly, which was I don't know where the benchmarks are. But when you were first describing it, it sounded like you had made a very ambitious benchmark of getting a step every month. And 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 those kind of benchmarks can sometimes put people in positions where they don't feel that they're succeeding all the time. But there there's two things about benchmarks that are important. You know, one is understanding where you want to get, but the other is also making them achievable. And so so I just want to, I just want to say that I I I hope that that's part of the thinking process of making sure that everyone is putting out an achievable goal because we're make it it sounds like you're you're pushing a lot of the students in the right direction and and have to figure out some of the other part of of those students. But continuing that process will require everyone to feel like they're making headway.
Absolutely. And that's exactly, David, where the conversation is right now amongst the leadership team, the instructional leadership team and our step consultants that we're working with. We're trying to understand and establish what are the appropriate benchmarks that feel realistic and attainable while still keeping that rigor that we want for our students. Because these assessments that we're giving, we're the first dual language school to do this, to do the English and the Spanish simultaneously. And so some of some research has to go in there in terms of how are our students developing across the two languages? And what are the appropriate benchmarks to set for them? And so those are the conversations that we are currently having and sort of revisiting these benchmarks to make sure that we are establishing clear and rigorous yet attainable benchmarks. Yes, because we are seeing a lot of growth and yet we're falling behind that benchmark that was originally established. And so we want to revisit that and make sure that that the goals are goals that are feasible for both our students and our teachers.
I want to address a comment in the chat. These reports are absolutely available to families. Actually, there are a couple of different comments on this. And I I believe that many teachers were able to reference them during parent teacher conferences. But to to the to Alma, to Daisy, asking about, you know, how this can be part of parent communication, I mean, that that's correct, isn't it, Deli Ness?
Absolutely. Yes. And I think part of the the English data came in a little bit just after, I believe, the parent teacher conferences. We did have the Spanish one, but these reports, if you if if you did not get it during parent teacher conferences, we tell all of the teachers, the data that we have, the reports that we have, make sure they're part of the conversation in parent teacher conferences. But please reach out to your to your teacher if you if you have not received this. There's actually pretty, you know, one pagers that we give parents with, this is the level that your child is in. This is exactly the recommendations that we ask you to do at home or skills to practice at home to help the student move to the next level. So this is all information that absolutely should be and is available to parents. And please, please reach out to your to your teacher if you haven't received it because we can definitely sit down with you, give you a report and talk that through with you on where exactly your child is and where in terms of next steps he or she should should go and and what skills you can practice at home and what you can do to support us to continue to see growth for your child.
Thank you. I I don't want to keep us from other business, but I did want to include one other glimpse at the step. As you may recall, we adopted the step because it was so granular, because it gives teachers very specific items that they can work on with our kids. And so, Deli Ness, can you explain what we're looking at here to that point?
Yeah. So these are the different pieces of the assessment or components that are assessed within step. And for example, here, we're seeing more what we call CAP, like concepts about print section and what components there are being assessed. And this is for our our younger students. And the the components that have been circled there in red are the areas that tell us this is where students are struggling the most. So students take this assessment, the teachers input all of the data within a data management system that we that comes with our assessment. And then we're able to gather reports on exactly what are our students performing well in? And then what are the areas that they need extra support in? And so then myself, the leadership team and our teachers come together to analyze this data that we get after each assessment round to see what are the particular areas that our kids are having challenges with. And then we come up with instructional plans and next steps to make sure that we are hitting on those areas where our our kids are struggling, therefore, to make sure we see improvement for the next Round of assessments. I think what's interesting from the data is and and not 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 too surprised, right? When kids are learning in two languages, there's there's confusion between letter sounds and English and Spanish. And that naturally happens when some when students aren't in dual language program. So just reinforcing a lot of those letter sounds and letter IDs continues to be an area of focus for us particularly. In kindergarten and in first grade. And what's exciting, it's not here, but our kids are doing pretty good in actual reading fluency, they can read. Even though they got some of their letters mixed up in English or in Spanish, they're able to read. They did much better on comprehension this round. The first round comprehension was a big area of focus. And we did not see that as much this second round. And there's a spelling component to the assessment, which is really interesting that our kids. Did extremely well in the spelling component, which is interesting. Because we see this letter ID, letter sound issue in isolation, but they're able to spell. So it it's interesting information. For us that helps us then create learning paths for our students that meet the needs of where they're at specifically. And that's where a lot of our work has been as as the instructional team. Really exciting and for us, fun stuff to dig into. And we're really, really happy with the staff assessment because it is able to give us this granular information. And we can break this down into a particular student and every error the child made. And really create lesson plans, small group instruction plans for students, particular to the needs that they might have.
Thank you. And if I can briefly engage in some vocabulary building. If you're a non educator, you may not know the word rhyme, R I M E. But as I recently learned, that means the part of the word that's not the first letter. So if the word is bag, the rhyme is ag. And now you know.
Instantly smarter. Thank you. Thank you all for that degree of depth. I do think, I know Emily was just texting me and apologizing for not. Advising in advance that she wouldn't be able to make it tonight, but I think even if we could. I know we have a lot to talk about in our education accountability meeting next time, but if we could even do just like a. I'll I will emphasize with her going through the step results on her own. But I really would love to. I will kind of put that. Propose that to her as her homework to kind of come with some questions related to the English results and see if we can just kind of break those out. We do have a meeting scheduled for next week. Folks are welcome to come. If they're not officially a part of the committee. All right.
Thank you. Would you, shall we continue into more new business, Gabrielle?
Yes.
Okay. So I hope this is a pretty straightforward one, but we are due to officially adopt our our policy around the Dignity for All Students Act. Which we recently did a training on for our staff. This was referenced in our charter documents and so forth. But it's important that we have the official vote, and so the full policy was included in your pre-read materials. For anyone following along who may not be familiar with it. DASSA, as it's known, is the state's law to make sure that we prevent bullying, harassment and discrimination in. In public school communities of all kinds. And so you can see here the different. Protected classes when it comes to this policy. And as we emphasize to the staff, this is entirely in line with what's always been in our family handbook and in our staff handbook. But it does put an extra emphasis on, you know, awareness. And so we officially designated Senior Sanchez, our counselor and special education director, as our dignity act coordinator in the building. And and there's a policy is posted online. The complaint form is online. We're shortly after this meeting adding the Google form version of that. I hope that this never needs to be used, but we know human nature being what it is. These types of things can happen and our focus is to protect every member of our community. And and so we want to make sure that the staff. Member or family member or student becomes aware of anything like this with regard to a student in our community that it's reported right away. And our staff are required to be very prompt in in reporting that. There are similar protections, I should add, in our policies, which we've always had about the adults in our community. But DASSA is specifically about taking care of students and making sure that in class, on a field trip. Online with your classmates, that we we are making sure that that nobody has to do go through some of the kinds of behaviors that are described in the policy. So. I'd love to answer any questions if anyone has them. But we fell very close to the all the SED recommendations here, and when we're ready, I'd love to to have a vote to make it to make this official.
Are there any major changes from last year's policy?
This is very similar to what we've always had on paper, spelling out, you know, following the SED template essentially.
Yeah.
We had not previously had the delegated coordinator and and done the the full training that we've done this year.
Okay. I hope that you all had a chance to do a quick review of the policy at least, and if there aren't any questions or any. Suggestions, I I feel comfortable moving forward to put this to a vote. Looking like. No questions? Okay, I will go ahead and do it then. I make a motion to adopt the DASSA policy as as written. Can I have a second?
A second.
Great, thank you. I'm Magdalena. All in favor? I? Great. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. We also shared the dates for the new calendar for the upcoming school year. Unfortunately, we have not seen a calendar released by the New York City DOE, which is always a challenge. Because ideally, we would do a little bit more coordinating around certain vacation times. But the calendar is essentially modeled on the same pattern of the past two years. With a couple of small changes, and the most notable of those is. That we like to have our our kindergarten students arrive first. Delina, would you mind just saying a couple of words about the reason for for that recommendation?
Sure, yes. We'd like to have our kindergarteners in the building first. We know that our kindergarteners are are new to the building, many times new to the school environment. And so I think that there's an advantage of having sort of a a smaller setting where we're just bringing our kindergarteners in. And we can use our other staff members to really support in welcoming our kindergarteners into the building. Supporting other classrooms of our kindergarten parent of of our kindergarten students. Usually, you know, you need all hands on deck with new kindergarteners, lots of crying. Supporting in the classroom. So this is something that I've done in previous schools that I've worked in, and it's been pretty successful. Of first welcoming our our youngest kiddos, making sure that they're settled in. Having extra staff onboard to support where needed. And so we'd like to have a first few days with them before we bring the rest of our our students into the building.
Yeah. And you know, we rec. We recognize that's a little, a little bit less than ideal for families that may have a kindergartner and an older student. To stagger it like that, but we felt like for a three day difference, it was really worth it for those benefits for the the little ones.
Question regarding that, sorry. In the past, the first week has been half day and then the second week has been full day. Would then the first graders and up start with a full day or will they also have half day and?
Yeah, everyone would start with with the half days.
So the first week?
Yeah.
That's great.
Which is the second week for kindergartners?
If I recall.
It's only.
Yeah, if I recall, there's there's three days of Kinder and then two days with everyone and then the long holiday weekend. And then a few more days, I can't recall if it's two or three, with everyone again, continuing that early early dismissal.
Any other questions or changes to highlight? No? Okay.
I'll just repeat the caveat that I shared over email. We will be developing out the multiple language versions, the version for families and the version for staff. So, you know. Rest assured on on those points, but if we could get your approval for the dates, then we can begin communicating them out.
Okay.
Michael, do you want to answer here the question around dismissal time?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, yes. I appreciate the reminder. So the question was, is the plan to have dismissal at three fifteen again or the same schedule as the first year, which was a little later? I don't have a final answer. I would strongly lean toward continuing the schedule that we have now. So that we have a little bit more of a tolerable school day while still having an extended school day. The reason I don't have a final answer is that we do have to have a conversation about that with our authorizer. As we think about doing that in a post COVID world. Happily, we have our annual visit from our authorizer tomorrow. And so this is one of the questions we're going to touch base with them about when we meet with them tomorrow. So we will have that information very soon. And Lauren or others, if you have opinions around that question, feel free to share those as well.
Okay.
Great. So.
Want to go ahead and move this, put this to a vote?
Please.
Sure. Okay, I make a motion to approve the school year twenty one, twenty two calendar dates provided as written. I have a second.
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 Great. All in favor? I?
I.
Hi.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. All right, I I will not reiterate too much of what Roberto already shared, but as you saw, we have a contract not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. This is a partner who has shepherded us through our our recent renovation. Knows the charter sector inside out, knows real estate in this city, which is very unusual compared to other real estate markets around the country. And so we've asked them to explore, focusing on this current site, what are the possible expansion opportunities that we have? This was a recommendation from our finance committee, thought it made sense of Roberto or anybody else wants to chime in. Feel free, but we'd love to have your approval for this contract.
Look, you know, it's 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 not a secret that we're going to need. A way to keep people in the building and a way to continue to grow the seats we have. And we're going to have to do that in the next ET.
David, I think we lost.
David. Oh, he's frozen. Uh-oh.
Take over the existing additional space in our site or look nearby makes the most sense.
Thank you, David. And this is about an eight week commitment? From DBI?
Yeah, we've talked to James New, the principal, and. He's already enlisted some bids for architects and so, yeah, it comes up to about six to eight weeks, Gabriel.
Okay, thank you. I think we lost our screen sharing here for a second.
There we go.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, any other questions or contacts for this contract? Okay. Then I would like to make a motion to approve the DBI contract as presented here. You have a second from David? Great. All in favor? I?
I.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. All right, shall we move to the finance committee?
Well, hopefully everyone can continue to hear me. Apparently, I've had some bad internet here.
Yeah. We can hear you.
Good. Well. Just to walk through quickly some of the notes. You know, we'll have a year-to-date surplus this month of seven eighty-eight. Which is is obviously not a bad thing to have. Continue to have a couple more months of operating, so we can, you know, we'll expect we have a forecast surplus of five thirty-eight. Which is against a budgeted surplus of twenty one thousand, so we've done a lot better than we thought at this time last year. And there should be some additional revenues and releases of contingencies that the finance committee will do going forward. We've already released the the bulk of the contingency. And but nonetheless, this will still be a a bit of a decrease from last month's projection. But overall, still very positive. From the the meeting this week from the finance committee, we we thought it was worthy of note that we've submitted our DOE enrollment numbers at two thirty-four. And that that's just a bit under budget, but we continue to to try to look for ways to to work with that, both in the budget and in the in the in the student body. I know staffing changes at all, although there were a number last month, and I think Michael covered. The bulk of of what those were about and how they were developing in this week, month and last month's presentations. We've, you know, just minor changes to the OTPS budget and as I mentioned earlier. The contingency release, because we've we've learned with some certainty that there will not be a change to the per pupil funding. For the balance of the year and going into next year. We finished the month with a nice balance sheet. I think we anticipate finishing the year with the best balance sheet probably. The school has seen, I know charter schools don't tend to have strong balance sheets, so I think we should take a little bit of of note of that. And all our ratios meet or exceed targets, but by quite a bit this month. So again, looking into a strong finish of the year, but we won't recognize any additional revenue. For the remainder of the year against our expenses to finish out. So those ratios will will tighten a bit. But overall, it it should still continue to look good. And hopefully, we'll have a plan going into the next month's meeting. That will give us a similar trajectory going into the following years. With the things we have in front of us. So and a lot of a lot of. Congratulations due to the executive staff to manage this budget and to continue to push the school forward in this environment. And, you know, good to have some of the breaks we had financially and the good work of our our team with Bob and those guys. So just so far, it looks looks very good all around for for this fiscal twenty one.
Thanks, David. Do you want to give the give the spotlight to Bob?
I I think David really covered it all. Year to date, year to date, we're very well positioned. We do intend on presenting the fiscal year twenty-two budget to this board at May's meeting. So Michael and I have been working on that. So I I think that, you know, we we have a meetings with the two meetings, I think, with the finance committee before May, so I we just put that on your radar. But, you know, financially, for next year, there was a very nice bump to per pupil, about four and a half percent. And then we are looking at a federal stimulus funding at a rate of about 4,200 per student. So those extra revenues will really help the school as far as getting us in a good spot for renewal and covering like learning loss that may have happened as a result of the pandemic.
Thanks, Bob. I didn't mean to steal your time.
Oh, no, it's all you, man.
It's, it's nice to have you back in this time zone.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you both. I think our, maybe our last item here within the finance committee is just to talk about our amendment to the agenda day, which was to, now that we've got Roberto in a more official capacity as part, one of his duties being fundraising and looking toward the future and leaps growth and budgets and everything that goes along with that. We discussed in our meeting yesterday that it would probably be a good idea to start making fundraising more of a regular part of our financial committee discussions. And to that end, we gracious, gratefully accept Charles's interest in serving on the finance committee as a longtime fundraiser and somebody with a great deal of expertise who we think could help us a lot in terms of guidance and just thought partnership in that area. So thank you, Charles, for being willing.
I'll do what I can. It's not easy, as we all know.
So I think we just then need to, oh, hang on, there's a question here in terms of fundraising. Has there been any thought?
Parents could participate.
Parents could participate. I believe that we started that conversation, we had a conversation about this last year or a couple of years ago, book fairs, et cetera. It's a good question. I think we haven't kind of circled back on what the parent component could be, but it's definitely something we're open to. I don't know about if there's anything you want to speak to specifically on that point, or Michael?
Well, I think there's always a role for parents to play in the large projects that school needs to undertake. We also know, and it's said from the very beginning, that we want our parents to be partners in the learning of their children and the education. And so we want to, we don't want to, we don't want to start creating a lot of mini fundraisers because it does take so much time. And, and, you know, parents are busy already with their work, et cetera. So we will come up, and actually Maho started this as part of our board initiative last year to come up with ways to be able to engage parents financially for fundraising purposes. So I know that I'll be visiting back again with Maho on those ideas. Michael, you want to add anything to that?
I will shamelessly add a plug that if you don't want to wait for an event, you can give online on our website. You can give to general operating, which is always welcome. You can all, and people do, including our families. I appreciate anybody maybe watching this as a donor. You can also designate for COVID relief. We still continue to use those funds for, you know, direct aid to our families who are still in need. We also have had families help us out by creating matching acknowledgement at their corporate employers, and that's, that's helpful as well. So thank you for, for the question. And yeah, as Roberto said, we just, we want to make sure that our main request of families is about partnership academically. But we also really, really, you know, welcome all kinds of support. And I think Charles would probably drive straight to your house to pick up.
Sure.
Thanks for the question, though.
Thank you. All right. So I think that we are then ready to go ahead and, and vote on Charles, putting Charles on the committee. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Charles Som as a member of the finance committee. I have a second. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. Thanks, everyone. We look forward to working with you, Charles. I'll include you on the calendar invites.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, executive committee, I think there are just some housekeeping items here. We, let me see. We communicated, I communicated with the folks at NICE Ed with David Frank and Paula Orlando, head of the Charter Schools Office and our liaison to the Charter Schools Office respectively, about the transition in our leadership team. And they were both, received the news very positively and are looking forward to collaborating with Michael Rettin Delinas and their new and existing capacities there. And reminded us, of course, that we will need to submit a non-material charter revision as part of the kind of procedure for this. So Michael, I think, is going to start working on the forms for that. We'll need to submit some minutes, but we'll get that in very soon. We will likely speak to Paul about that during our board focus group tomorrow, which will just be myself and Charles as board officers. We also uploaded Melissa's resignation of transition off of the board for them as well. I don't know if they'll ask about that, but we did let them know. And we will, the three of us will meet with Paula tomorrow again for a one-hour focus group. I've sent some materials to the three of us, including the board, the school's responses to their overall questionnaire, which we may or may not be asked on. And, and we'll report back to everybody on how that, how that goes. I think for those of you who were here last year, you remember Paula, she actually came to, I believe, our meeting, or maybe it was already the May meeting.
It was the first one.
That was your first meeting, though?
No, 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 my first meeting. It was, it was the first online meeting.
Meeting. Oh, that's right. Oh, goodness. Wow. What a year it's been. Well, I know. Well, luckily this year, she'll just take an hour out. And thank you to David and Charles both for carving that hour out tomorrow for us to talk to her. And I think that is, that's essentially it from the executive committee and no other real housekeeping items. Academic and accountability, I'll take this one as well, since Melissa's transitioned out and Emily's not here. We, I think our next meeting will be focused a lot and Delinas chime in here if you see this differently. We talked about circling back on some of the DEI work that we started working on last month. I think it would definitely be a good idea to, I will, I will reach out to Emily about bringing some questions related to, or just generally her thoughts about the English step data. We can talk through the safety plan review within light of the new COVID guidance and possibly even some of the staffing changes related to the new budget. Michael, we had talked about that yesterday during the finance committee. And I have that meeting calendared for next Tuesday. But then I think because of calendar glitching, probably on my end, I have another meeting on May 4th, the following Tuesday after that. So I guess my question primarily for you, Deli Ness and Michael and Roberto as well, is it, should we do next week? Should we do the May 4th? The, it might be a carryover from like a bumped, probably has something to do with the way that I set up the recurrence. But which Tuesday would you prefer to be our next meeting, I guess, is my question?
And this is, this is the education and accountability meeting.
Yeah. I don't know why it shows. If it only shows as repeating on my calendar, let me know. I have it as the 27th and the 4th.
Yeah, I do as well.
Yeah, me too.
Either date is fine with me.
Delinas, do you have a preference for the 27th over the 4th or vice versa?
Um, I, I would say the 4th, just because I know Emily was going to send us something to work on. We haven't received it yet.
You haven't gotten that yet? Okay.
Time to, to do that work and have it.
Okay. I will nudge her on that. For myself here. Okay, so then we'll keep May 4th and I will delete next week's. Thank you. Okay. Okay, board norms and development. I think we will need to come back to this, but we had touched on this briefly. You know, I think we, as the school grows, we could stand to maybe add some new seats to the, our general membership. We have talked in previous meetings about potentially adding a community member or two, which I think is a great idea. And I think we might even be able to add to our current number, our, just a reminder for everybody, our bylaws allow up to nine members. Melissa's transitioned off, so now we've got six folks. Emily is officially on, so we have six voting members. And we will eventually have to sadly replace Maho as our parent rep with a new parent rep. And that's something that we, I know that the internal team is going to talk about, has some ideas for candidates, but of course want to talk it through and, you know, even approach the candidates first to see how they feel. So I just kind of wanted to put that on everyone's radar and, and ask, I think, you know, internally, folks probably have some ideas for the types of skillsets they'd want to see, but does anyone have their own ideas here for, you know, skillsets to add? For any new members? Or to kind of double down on, I, I think it would probably, I would love to have another education person.
Yeah. Yeah, Gabrielle, I would say someone with dual language.
Yep, we've talked about that as well. My hope is that, and I, I'm sure that we are not going to know this for a while, that I know what has sort of kept us from moving forward on that a little bit is not knowing if we'd be able to find the person that we want living in state and whether or not we would continue to be able to engage somebody as a remote member with a full board membership if, you know, once the, if the executive order changes in the future. You know, essentially not permitting video participation once schools are fully back in session. I don't know. I think that's still a very big question mark, but I also think that, that's an important base of knowledge for us to have on the board. And I know going way, way back, you know, Rettin's been bringing this up as well. It's just someone that we probably will, will need to put some focus on that. So thank you for, for volunteering that.
Yeah, I would also just remind everybody, as I recently had to remind myself, our bylaws also allow for committee members who are not necessarily trustees. And that would include the academic committee. So that may be a way to add expertise without having to have someone agree to all that you find people go through on our behalf.
That's true. So if we, you know, we can all kind of continue discussing this, but if you, within your networks, know people who you feel like would be good candidates, would be interested either in committee membership, which again, it's not full board membership, or the commitment of, of full board membership. You know, feel free to reach out. I'd love to talk to, to folks about it. And, and it's something that we'll need to think about as we, you know, head into a new school year for sure. Okay.
So I think our next item is public comments. We have three members of the public in attendance. We tend to be pretty casual. However, I also want to be respectful of our, our board members' time. And so we generally ask for comments to be limited to about three minutes. I don't think anyone's gone over yet. But if I can just kind of go in alphabetical order as they show up here on screen. Ms. Woods, welcome. And is there anything you'd like to share with us this evening?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rosado, how are you? Any, any comments you'd like to share?
Hi, no, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much. And finally, Ms. Farber, would you care to share any comments tonight?
I think, I think I asked them while I was going, as we were going forward. So I think some now. Thank you so much, though.
Thank you. Thanks for making the time to be here tonight.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Okay, so this will be, I think, the last executive session that we'll have for a while, but I wanted to, there is kind of one remaining item that we wanted, I want to bring everybody up to speed on. So you'll have a meeting, an additional Google meeting invitation in all of your LEAP address inboxes, everyone. So just as a reminder for how the executive sessions work, we will leave this session, break really quickly, go into executive session, which is, which will be a Google meeting with that invitation and then come back in essentially to adjourn this meeting. So I would then like to go ahead and motion to go into an executive session to discuss matters relating to the employment of one specific employee and hoping for this to last no longer than 20 minutes, because I know that we're already over time and I, it's been an exhausting day for everyone, I'm sure. So thanks to you, everybody. Thank you to the members of the public who have shown up and engaged. Thank you to the team. Thank you in advance, I believe, to Michael, who's probably going to keep this session open. I will let you know as I can. Thank you to everybody for the, for just a little more bandwidth tonight before we wrap up.
Right.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you all. Thank you all.